Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Longdale City Council. I want to thank everyone for joining tonight. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give us the roll call.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Mayor Protem Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item is Black Sluthman. I ask the councilwoman Shirley Cuevas to lead us into the Pacific Legion.
Uh, please stand wherever you are facing the nearest flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on our agenda is presentations, presentations tonight of our outgoing council members, excuse me, outgoing commissioners and committee members. Here in the city, we want to thank them for their service to the community. We'll be sending them the appropriate recognition certificate in honor of their service to the community. First, of honorees are honored for their service is the planning deputy Alan, apologies to the city as advisory board council. And outgoing Shirley Cuevas, Carla Rose Pryor, and Ufi Mola. Thank you, three for their services certificates. Next group of individuals who have served the community Parks and Recreation and Service, Social Services Mission. That's three outgoing. This body, Donna Sika, Erica Harbison, Shirley. Thank them as well for their service to the Parks Recreation and Services Mission. Next body is the beautification committee, charged with all of our beautification programs and cleanup weeks, holiday decoration competition, and also our business award improvement programs. That we have listed in the committee. Fari Armena, Armena, Osuelo, Monte, and Eric Escamilla. Thank them for their service. And our final board is our youth committee. Prizes of young folks here in the city that advise the council on issues concerning youth. And they discussed team program and team program. Thank you. Well, for their service. Katie Barrios, Andrew Expandola, Yolene Lima, and April Oyns. For their service on the youth advisory committee. And with that, we expect a nice plaque and a certificate appreciation signed by all the council members and all the outgoing commissioners and committee members and for serving the community of honor. That will be our presentations for tonight. That, we have our public safety report, and we're proud on our captain Alan. Captain Alan.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report from March 1st through March 14th. In regards to crime, crime continues to trend downward in the new year. Robberies are down 50%, assaults are down 50%, while burglaries remain even. Two problems remain and stand out in our city. Large thief thefts are up 127% from last year, year-to-date. In reviewing all the large thief thefts, I continue to see that most thefts could be prevented by community members locking their cars, not leaving valuables in plain sight, or leaving tools, etc., in the back of truck beds. Large thief thefts would drop 50 to 75%, if our community do their part in securing their property and not leaving items visible. Your Longdale deputies continue to make an impact on crime and keep the city safe. On March 2nd at 7:00 PM, Deputy Sandvik conducted a traffic stop on Prairie Marine Avenue for traffic violations. After contacting the driver and two occupants, Deputy Sandvik determined the driver was on probation for receiving stolen property. During probation compliance search of the vehicle, Deputy Sandvik over the .45 caliber pistol, which the driver admitted to possessing. Driver was arrested for exfil and possession of a firearm and booked at South Los Angeles Station. Last, I want to tell the community that Sheriff Villanueva will be holding a community conversation for the city of Longdale on March 25th from 2:00 PM, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM via Zoom. During the meeting, during the meeting, the sheriff, myself, and city council members will be discussing public safety in the city. Community members will be able to submit questions. To submit questions, please email it to SIB, as in boy, S I B E P T at L S D dot org. Once again, that's S I B E P T at L S D dot org. To attend the meeting, you can call in at (213) 306-3066. Access code is (146) 383-3370. Or you can view the meeting with a Zoom website code. A flyer will be distributed with the website information throughout the city and my station. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Captain, for the report. Are there any questions of Captain's report? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to thank you, Captain, for that report. Okay, let's move on to oral communication. Let's see if we have any oral communications from the city clerk. Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have three tonight, and I will go ahead and read them verbatim. The first oral communication is from Caroline Bustillos, Longdale resident. Hello, I am writing to you to express my concern as a Longdale resident. I live near the train track and enjoy this green belt every day to walk my dog or just run, and I know many neighbors do the same thing. I do know that LA needs more clean public transportation as a sustainability consultant myself. But I also, I do also know that LA needs more trees and more green areas for quality, air quality and community well-being. I believe that the option going through the Hawthorne Boulevard is a better and more logical option as, one, it will bring more walking people to the area and the multiple businesses on the Boulevard, whereas this won't happen if the Metro goes through residential areas. Two, I have concerns with the safety of the Condon Avenue area with the pipeline being nearby. Three, owning a house in the neighborhood, I am off, I am of course concerned about the devaluation of the house because of noise and vibration disturbance. And four, as I already mentioned, I do not want the green belt along the current train track to disappear. I hope you will take my voice into consideration in your decisions as you thrive to build a better Los Angeles for its inhabitants. Second comment is from Pam London, Longdale resident. Please tell residents how much money the city makes per permit issued for the advertisements placed on our cars, gates, and doors. There has been an ongoing issue with these advertisements. They are placed on cars, both on the street and in driveways. Rubber bands are used to attach them to gates and doorknobs. All of this ends up in our streets and eventually the storm drains. No one wants this crap and no one is willing to pick it up either. Years ago, I complained to the evil entity but got the same old song and dance. We are reactive, not proactive. You can lodge a complaint. Then the city will check for permits. The cards are stuck in car side windows. If you're not careful, roll down your window. Now they're inside your door. Eventually, the accumulation will result in window regulator problems. That equates to a lot of money wasted on the repair. They are placed under windshield wipers. Sometimes those are broken too. Last week, one of our cars had a flyer stuck in the door under the handle. It left a large white mess. Same for another one of our vehicles. The windshield had the large white residue due to the moisture and rain. Ours were not the only ones. Hopefully, other people are claiming to you too. I don't appreciate this type of advertisement. Does the city really benefit from these piddly little permit fees? Our streets and storm drains have enough trash without this too. And the final comment is from Randall Abram, Longdale resident. I had requested information from the city regarding the required membership requirements in order to obtain and operate a firework booth in Longdale. The code states that, quote, "verification shall be demonstrated through the submission of a list of names and addresses, and in the case of youth-based organizations, a statement of the age of each member of the organization," end quote. The code states any private information in response to a public records request would be redacted. The word shall, in the code, I'm sorry, the word shall in the code means this is a requirement to submit a list of names and addresses. While the public records request deadline was today, I had to follow up my request this morning and was only presented with a response after 5:00 PM, preventing me with little time to present my questions in this meeting. It appears that officials have been negligent in implementing the codes, so there are no records available to provide, to prove that any of these organizations have met the requirements. If I had sufficient time, I would be able to address what constitutes municipal corruption by not implementing laws. What I am being told is that finance has implemented their own procedures, supplanting the municipal code and relying on a signed declaration under penalty of perjury in lieu of following the law. What incentive is there for these organizations to provide truthful information since the city is willing to rely on a declaration and little chance of ever verifying? The next time I need a permit, I hope to be granted the same accommodation and not require an expector to visit and approve the work. I will provide the city with a signed declaration. This self-certification does not appear to have been written to law, but I would like to know by whose authority it has been implemented in this city. I was told that in spite of the municipal code stating lists were required, this is now viewed as overly invasive for applicants and members and is legally problematic. I would say that prohibiting astroturf in my own private property is overly invasive or any myriad of regulations that prohibit me from full use of my property. But I am not given the same free pass as these organizations who poison the air and risk lives and property with these fireworks. So now there is a scramble on by the city to consider potential code changes to preserve legal rights. Since when has that been a concern for the rest of us? I have a right to peace and quiet and clean air. I have a right to have the laws implemented by the city enforced. The fireworks stand application process also requires proof of nonprofit status from the state of California, but a review of the applications shows that even this is not enforced. And that concludes the submitted comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for reading those public comments. Let's bring it up to the dice to see if we have any response to the public comment. Start with the councilwoman Cuevas, if you have anything.
Uh, no, just, I will mention later that I did attend a meeting with Metro and ultimately the decision on which way to put will come down to them and based off of public input, but I'll, I'll say a little more later, but it's an ongoing issue. With that, I'll pass it along.
Okay, that sounded like that was on Bernadette Suarez. Yeah, that was Suarez, right?
Uh, yes, that was me.
That's here, that's here from, um, from Shirley Cuevas. Thank you, Bernadette.
I just have a question for city manager. Why could, were, did we not have all documentation needed by, um, for the fireworks stands? Or are we still trying to get that information? Because I, I do want to make sure that we have all proper documentation.
Yes, thank you.
On the fireworks stands.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Cuevas. This was something that we looked into after receiving the public comments at the last meeting as well as the public records request. It was something that our city attorney looked into in working with staff, and he might be able to provide some further explanation from a legal standpoint. So with that, I'll invite Greg Murphy to add some comments.
Thank you, Kevin. With, with respect to lists of people working with these nonprofit entities or membership of the nonprofit entities, that can get into a tricky legal area because some of these nonprofit entities are religious or politically affiliated. And asking them to share lists of their members, as they say, gets into some tricky legal areas. Because of that, after last meeting, when I was told that we were relying on declarations under penalty of perjury and had been doing so for some period of time before I arrived, I looked into it. I thought that was a reasonable way to carry forward what the ordinance requires in terms of ensuring that these entities are actually invested in the community. And talking with staff said that, yes, we're going to have to update the ordinance so that we're in strict compliance with it in future years, but that we're in substantial compliance with it now. With respect to some of the other things that the commenter mentioned, I don't really know what was in those files. I didn't look at the files themselves. But I did want to speak as to the lists. If you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for answering that, Greg.
Okay. Thank you, um, councilwoman. That's here from councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also attended that meeting with Metro, and again, I will say things later. Ultimately, it's going to be Metro's decision, but they did hear us loud and clear at our meeting this week. And so I hope the resident finds it and understands that we are holding Metro accountable on getting out the information to our residents. Also, I want to say, Greg, thank you for that response because I have the same questions it surely did. Thank you. That's it.
Thank, thank you. Protem Kearney.
I just have a couple of things, Robert. To respond to Pam London's, uh, those little hands out, little flyers they do early in the morning, they're all illegal. We do not get permits for that. I've turned several into over to Mike's office. One is a steady one that's an insurance company out of Hawthorne. I think we can start fining them now. And then, um, Randall, I remember I first got in the council, Robert, you probably remember this, I asked one of the youth groups to present or show us the residents, the children, and they came up with 30% of the names of Longdale. So I told, I think it's only youth groups, not churches, that we have to ask for the residency, a 30% of residency. What I remember was a group that I asked for, and they came back with over 30% Longdale residents. And I think I'll turn it over to you, Robert.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Protem. I would add, um, I'm also just to reiterate on the Green Line extension, also known as the Sea Line Extension, that, you know, the city is, um, we've been on this issue with Caltrans, excuse me, with Metro for a number of years, easily 20 years. And it kind of ebbs and flows depending on what initiative is passed, whether it was major J or K or what have you. And we have underscored to Metro in low uncertain terms of our opposition to this project as we feel that there is no benefit to the community, unlike a benefit to some of the other communities, namely, you know, Torrance and Redondo Beach. There's also an economic justice component that we're concerned about as well, especially if you're talking about not undergrounding. There's a number of social and economic justice problems that I have with this because I don't believe that this would be the case if it was going through a more affluent communities, what have you, as opposed to a community that's considered a underserved community for the most part. So we have those concerns. So we continue to fight with the, um, with Metro to make sure that our voice is heard. The councilwoman is absolutely correct. At the end of the day, all is going to be made by Metro, which project is Finney that they are going to pursue, but we certainly encourage our residents to make sure that their voice is heard. They contact Metro. They also may want to contact the Metro representative, which happens to be Mayor James Butts, the city of Inglewood. He's actually the Metro rep for, for our area, although he's just one voice on Metro, and he's pretty inclined, he's a pretty reasonable person, a very reasonable person. And he's pretty much inclined to listen to the city of Longdale about a year or so ago, maybe, no, it's maybe about two years ago. I had a few, gathered a few folks from Longdale and a couple of folks from Redondo Beach, and we actually had a private meeting with Mayor Butts as our, as our reps. And that's something that they normally, members normally don't do outside of their board meeting. But like I said, he, he wants to hear from you, and so I would encourage our residents to let Mayor Butts, as our representative, Metro as a whole, hear from them on this issue. And going to the advertising on the cars and doors, I share the concern of the residents on, on this issue. You know, sometimes it's just get out of hand where you have these flyers just all over the place, you know, in the mornings when you come out to your car or what have you. There's no one accountable to pick up, you know, after them. It would be one thing if the owner of the car decides that, yeah, this is useful to me, so I'm going to take it, you know, on the flyer. But often what happens is the flyer ends up on the roadway for somehow or another. The owner of the car just throw them on the roadway, or they blow away or what have you. But at any rate, whoever putting the flyers out should be held responsible for cleanup, what have you. If they're even allowed to do it in the first place, which I know there's some First Amendment issues that might come into play. But I definitely think we should take a look at, at one company that Protem was mentioning, especially if it's a repeat, you know, offender. Obviously, there's a number associated with their flyers that we can contact and dissuade them from putting out flyers, at least making them accountable when they're causing lightning. And with that, that's all I have on the, on the public comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, it's Kevin Chun, city manager. If I might respond to a couple of the items as well, very briefly. First, related to the flyers, that is something that we will definitely revisit from a code enforcement perspective and will take the appropriate actions that we can. Of course, it is a bit of a difficult issue as, you know, we have to find these distributors out in the community actually putting the flyers on cars or other places. So we'll make a more of an effort to look for it for those folks that are doing that. But to your point and Mayor Protem's point, we will look to see who the actual companies are that are doing the advertising, and if we can get a hold of them, we will certainly do so and make them understand that that's not something that they can do with a permit or, or we'll let them know how it can be done legally. So we will definitely look into that. And then regarding the comment by our resident Caroline Bustillos regarding the Green Line, I just wanted to clarify, it seemed like from her comments that her impression was that the city would be making these decisions about the Green Line. And I just wanted to clarify that this project is a Metro project. It is not a city project. And the city has similar views as what the residents have shared. And we are looking to make sure that those voices are heard from our community. Of course, we will be submitting our own comments on the project itself. And so there's going to be a little bit more discussion on this later on during the meeting, so I'll save further comments until that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, with that, we will close other comments and comments from the council. And let's consider item, item G, the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve the consent calendar.
This is councilmember Suarez. I'll second it.
Okay, the motion has been made by Cuevas that we approve the consent calendar, and Suarez has seconded the motion. There any debate or discussion on the motion? Here now, I'm going to ask the city clerk to conduct the roll. The vote, please.
Okay, yes, Mr. Mayor. For the consent calendar, Mayor Protem Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome.
Item five is the annual 2020 general plan progress report. Let's have the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and residents and the public alike. Before you have an item, it's the general plan and housing report 2020. Every year, the Department of Community Development is required by the state of California, Housing and Community Development, to submit an annual report updating HCD, as we commonly refer to them, the state agency, on the progress towards our general plan as well as our housing report. And as attached in the staff report, I'll be brief about some of the actions that we've been undertaking in the department as well as all the activity. First off, despite the COVID, we had COVID closures with the city hall. We have about 673 recorded counter visits before we closed up. 116 site plans were reviewed, 111 residential property ports, and 694 building permits were issued throughout the year of 2020. In addition, the city adopted a new density bonus program as well as updated ADU regulations at towards the end of the year and the beginning of this year, which is not part of this report. We also processed many business licenses, as well as were successful in opening several businesses the council is aware, WSS Shoe Store, King of Wings, Hersch Pummy, etc., and several other new brewery, which was approved at Planning Commission as well, and a hotel dental office that was a mixed-use project off of Hawthorne Boulevard. And some of the other things that we're undertaking in the department is a complete revision, a modernization of our zoning code. Those efforts are ongoing and continue, and they'll be part of the update with the city's general plan as well as the Hawthorne Boulevard plan, which are expected to be completed in 2020, but they could push out a little further because of COVID and delays for outreach. So we may push that out a little further, but we're expecting and anticipating in February 2020 completion as well as the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan. The housing element, as the council is well aware, we have to adopt a new housing element every few years. Our, I think it's eight now. It used to be five, but now our housing element is due. And so that will be before the council and planning commission coming up this end of this year. That'll be ending the fifth, I think it's the fifth element on June 30th, 2020. We've also increased incentives and for residential to encourage people to merge lots, to bring in projects together, to develop bigger projects where they have shared parking, shared access. So we get, we encourage developers, if they own two lots side by side, to come in and develop two full single-family homes where applicable, as well as put in two-car garages for each lot and provide the applicable parking pursuant to our code. We also redoing, we're still working on the urban runoff with Public Works. We enforce that. We've updated our SECA guidelines and numerous other things that we've been undertaking in the department. We're staying pretty busy. Right now, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission and recommended forwarding to the city council. The city attorney's office reviewed the staff report and the The city attorney's office reviewed the staff report and the resolution attached as well as the report. Uh, it was noticed and it is exempt under SEQA. Uh, this concludes staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, are there any, um, questions of the, of the staff report on this item? Okay, it's pretty. Let me do a mic check real quick. Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, sir.
We hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay, great. I just unplugged my headset. Okay, thank you for that report. Um, sounds like you guys have been pretty busy in community development. Um, like a lot of good things are happening. Are there any questions of the, the staff report? Okay, see you in.
Um, Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tem Kearney. I'll make a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
This is, uh, Shirley, I'll second that.
Okay, I'm sorry, who, who made the motion?
This is Pat.
So, so Kearney made the motion and seconded by, um, Cuevas, that we receive the, the annual 2020 general plan progress report. Let's, let's, let's have the vote. Madam, uh, city clerk, can you conduct the vote for me?
Okay, for item number five, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, madam. Next item. Thank you, thank you for that report. Thank you for that work. Uh, the next item is item six, change order concerning the fiscal year 2019, 2020 annual street project.
Uh, good evening, honorable mayor and the members of the council. This is Julian Lee, uh, director of Public Works. Uh, the item before you is for the approval change order number one for fiscal year 2019, 20, annual street improvement project. Um, currently, CECL contractors are working on this, uh, this project fiscal year 1920, annual street improvement project that the city council awarded back on October 19th of 2020. Um, using the fund mostly from CDVG, SB1, and Measure R, the contractors are repairing close to 36,000 square foot of streets along Gravilla, Freeman, 159th Street, and 147th Streets. Um, recently staff discovered there were, uh, about $354,000 in Measure M Fund that will expire June 30th of this year. In addition, uh, the staff found several streets near the current project area that are in critical condition. Um, staff has provided some, uh, some pictures of the existing condition in the attachment of the staff report. Um, staff reached out to CECL for a cost proposal of those areas that are, uh, that are need to be repaired, um, as soon as possible, including the extension of Gravilla from 170th to Atiesia, 161st Street, 156th Street, and 147th Streets totaling around, uh, 93,000 square foot of pavement. The cost proposal of 337,105 dollars was received from CECL on March 1st and staff evaluated that, uh, evaluated the pricing, uh, which is aligned with the original bits of it all. Uh, there's some cost saving, uh, for this work due to that city is not paying for another mobilization cost to the contractor. Uh, so with that, staff recommends the city council to approve the change order number one for fiscal year 1920 annual street improvement project in the amount of 337,105 dollars. Approve the conditions, contingency amount of 16,895 dollars. Approve the contract amendment number one and approve the allocation of Measure M Fund of 354,000 dollars to street improvement accounts. Thank you, and staff is over for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions on, um, item six on the report? Okay, this, um, there's, there's three, um, portions, um, to item six. Uh, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item six?
Madam, this is Mayor Pro Tem Kearney. Have a question first, request?
Yes, yes, sir.
Julian, on the breakdown on page three of three, we have a general fund cost there, 160,418. Is that a matching dollar thing? Or is that's what we had to come out of general fund to pay for the first part of this project?
I do believe it was a matching fund. Um, this was, um, I think this was due to the matching fund and also because I didn't, I don't think we had enough of, enough SB1 and the CDVG funds.
Cause I was wondering why we didn't use some of that measure and money to offset the general fund cost.
Yeah, I think this, if this was a matching fund, I think, um, Mala could, uh, could answer that question if it's possible. This, again, the funding was awarded, uh, back in October, so I don't have the background on that. But if, uh, if it's necessary, I'll research that information and provide the information for you, sir.
And I just wondered if it was matching fund or not.
I, I can, uh, speak on this one. When we were doing the overall project for the year, there was matching funds. We had money that was carried forward from year to year that we had not used in the general fund for streets. So we went ahead, we were absent some of the money, so we went ahead and used that source for the total project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mala.
No problem.
So with that, Robert, I'll make a motion to go to staff recommendation. Approve one, approve two, approve three, approve four.
And this is Councilmember Suarez, I'll second that.
Four, okay, hit, three, okay, so four. Okay, so the motion's been made.
With attachment.
Yes, the motion's been made by Kearney that we, uh, approve the staff recommendations including, um, the, the four requests of the staff and has been seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? See you in. The vote, item six.
Okay, for item number six, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, madam. Item seven, city council subcommittee on Measure C, Metro C, which is also the Green Line Extension Project. Let's have.
Yes, good evening again, um, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, uh, very briefly. Um, at the last city council meeting, um, the city council had, uh, pretty significant discussion regarding the, uh, Metro C line, which is, um, uh, is now what it's been called, um, what we've all been, what we've all known for many years as the Green Line. Uh, but there was significant, um, uh, comments and questions made by council members, uh, which led to, uh, staff, um, um, scheduling monthly meetings with Metro so that there could be more communication and understanding of, um, what's happening with the project, um, on a, you know, hopefully week to week monthly basis. Um, and, uh, actually, uh, we were able to, since the last city council meeting, we were able to schedule and have, um, this, that first meeting with Metro last week. And included from the city council on, um, that meeting was city council members, um, Hoffman Gorman as well as Suarez. And, uh, moving forward, we wanted to just bring this, um, matter to the city council for consideration, um, as to whether or not the council would want, um, to form a subcommittee to be meeting with Metro on a monthly basis, um, which could include, um, council members Hoffman Gorman as well as, uh, Suarez, or if the council would like to select, um, others for, uh, this subcommittee. So with that, um, that's, um, staff's presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, report. Are there any, any questions? Um, item seven.
Uh, Mayor, this is Pro Tem Kearney?
Yes, sir.
I have, uh, for first, I didn't know there was a subcommittee formed. But, uh, I was kind of surprised that, uh, you, Robert, weren't part of the subcommittee because you've been on the council, what, this is your 19th year, I believe? I could be wrong. And you know firsthand what Metro's been trying to do. I mean, I know the two ladies do a fine job, but I think we'd have more clout if they were part of the sub, subcommittee, if you wanted to do it, if you have time. But I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Mr. Mayor and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney, just for clarification again, a subcommittee has not been formed and that's the, that's why this report has been brought to the city council, is to consider whether or not a subcommittee should be formed.
Um, oh, uh, thank, thank, thanks for that, um, um, Mr. Pro Tem, are you? I think you, you for the comments. Yeah, I was going to say that, um, I, I definitely wouldn't mind, um, being on the, on the subcommittee. Although, you know, I always say that, what, do I need one more in my life? But this is, it's, you know, such an extremely important, you know, um, um, project, um, that's been in the making for the last, before I got on the council. Um, and I do have the, the opportunity to even during the daytime, if, if needed, to go to some Metro meetings that's not necessarily part of the subcommittee, but the, you know, to, see what they're saying to other communities, um, such as, such as what I, um, did in time past. You know, I would go to some of the meetings in, um, and particularly in, um, Dondu Beach, but even some in LAX, um, area, Westchester area, to see if they were saying something different than what they were saying in the community. Landale, sometimes you found that to be the case, at least I found that case that, that's what it's certain. Um, in terms of, uh, make sure that our voices was heard and that people that's outside of Landale understand the adverse effects that the project will have on the city of Landale. Sometimes they're not, uh, aware of that because it's not necessarily advantageous for Metro to bring those up to, um, other communities, um, when they're outside of Landale. So I do have the opportunity of the, of the time, I should say, uh, I'll be able to go to those type of event, um, should they, um, arise, especially once they start lifting, um, some of the stay at home orders. I know in time past, there was a few events, um, uh, meetings, um, downtown, um, LA that, um, former, council member, I, uh, with a T in. For some reason, they like to have those meetings. Of course, Metro meets in the daytime, um, um, as well. And I'm not sure when they're going to lift the stay at home orders, but when they do, it would be definitely advantageous for us to actually be, um, um, at those meetings outside of, um, Landale, outside of the scope necessarily of this, um, subcommittee. But I would be interested in being on the subcommittee. I'm wondering who else would be interested, um.
Mr. Mayor, this is Rhonda Hoffman Gorman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also, um, appreciate being considered for this subcommittee. I think that this first meeting that we just attended, um, Metro heard our concerns and it was a very good meeting. I also would like to bring up the fact that when we, um, did just place ourselves on different committees and subcommittees, um, just here a couple of weeks ago, I am an alternate on a couple of those, but this would, this committee is a pretty big deal and, and I think I could handle the, the workload that it will, um, generate for me.
Okay, okay, thank you for, thank you for that. Um, is anyone else interested to be on the committee?
This is Councilmember Suarez. I honestly, right now, I do have a pretty packed schedule with work, so I'm, I'm okay if Robert wants to. I did attend the last one, um, and it worked out because it was during the evening, but, um, I have no problem if Robert wants to sit on there.
Okay, thank you for that. So it sounds like, let, let's hear from, uh, Cuevas, um, first, uh, what are you, what are your thoughts, um?
And, no, no, uh, I think, uh, uh, Mayor and Rhonda should be, uh, in the committee.
Okay. So without objection, I'll, um, put on the committee, subcommittee for the Metro C line, uh, myself and councilwoman Hoffman Gorman. Without any objections. That would be the, so I guess we'll figure out how often, it says monthly, I guess we'll figure out that part out as, as we do. Okay, Mr. City Manager?
That sounds perfect, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, yes, um, we will be talking with Metro. Um, I, I will probably be talking with them this week and so we will look into, um, the next time that we can, um, um, have our, our next meeting.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you. Thank you for putting that on the agenda and thank you, um, councilwoman, um, Hoffman Gorman for, um, willing to serve on the committee as well as, um, I know you had brought this issue up at the last, uh, meeting. So I want to thank you for that. Uh, let's see, item I, city manager's report.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, just a couple of items to share with the community. Um, first, since we were talking about, uh, the Metro C line or Green Line, um, I, I wanted to let everyone know that, um, um, the scoping period for the draft environmental impact report, uh, was started some time ago by Metro and the deadline for submitting comments was supposed to be today. However, after hearing from some members of the community that, um, um, they wanted to comment on, um, um, the, the Metro project and, um, seeing as there was some confusion regarding the scoping period and we didn't have a real confidence that the information had gotten out to the public. Um, staff reached out to Metro and, um, uh, requested that the scoping period be extended until March 29th. Um, last week, we found out from Metro that they had, um, agreed to extend the scoping period. So now it is in place and the scoping period will be until, um, Monday, March 29th. And so if anybody, any members of the public who are interested in this project, if they, uh, would like to submit comments to Metro, um, they can do so. We have information on, on how you can do that on the city's website. Um, we've also sent out information, um, via social media as well as on our cable TV channel as well. So, um, we encourage, um, uh, residents to, to submit their comments. But I also wanted to note that, um, um, and as Metro let us know during our meeting with them, that, uh, while the scoping period is a time that they are legally obligated to, um, accept comments from the public, um, that is just, uh, one of their legal requirements, but they can also receive comments from the public at any time now up to when the, um, draft EIR is, um, submitted. So, uh, or, or when it's, um, presented, I should say. So, um, I, I just wanted to let the public know that it's now a good time to submit comments as part of the scoping period, but they can also do so at any time, uh, even after the scoping period has ended. So, um, again, um, really encourage residents to do so. The other item I wanted to bring up is, um, related to, uh, the reopening of city facilities as well as resuming, um, in-person city council meetings. Um, as everyone knows, um, LA County has, um, moved from the purple tier, which is the very restrictive tier that we, we've been living under, to the less restrictive red tier. And that started today. Um, and as a result of that, um, many more sectors of the economy have been allowed to reopen with restrictions. Um, and in addition to that, um, schools are looking to reopen, you know, across the state as well, including here in Landale. And with that, um, staff is taking a very hard look at, um, you know, coming up with a plan and a date for when to reopen our city facilities. And of course, we'll be looking, um, for guidance from the county in terms of what they will allow, uh, for, for public gatherings. So, um, that's definitely something that's going to happen probably sooner than later. And I just wanted the, the public to know that, um, uh, we are looking for a date and as soon as we have a date certain, uh, we will make sure to get that out to the public to let everybody know in advance. Um, and, um, that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Okay, let's have our mayors and council reports. Let's start with Councilwoman Suarez.
So I attended last week, um, the meeting as mentioned before. So I attended last week, um, the meeting as mentioned before with uh, Metro regarding the C line, otherwise known as the Green Line Extension. Um, and there were just a few quick notes, um, that I thought were interesting last time we had asked regarding their outreach. And um, they seemed to mention that they primarily, if I'm not mistaken, reached out to a quarter mile um, from where the, the two routes were supposed to go. Um, we also asked, you know, what, how they're getting their data regarding whether this actually needs to be, if people are actually gonna use the line. And it seems that they're basing it off of population growth statistics. Um, I mean, I don't, I don't know where they're getting those hard numbers from, but um, hopefully we can get more information soon. And um, another thing that I thought was interesting that they mentioned regarding the two outreach events that they had um, a few weeks back, or that two hundred people attended the first one and one hundred the second one, um, they could not differentiate uh, and break down from what regions those attendees were from. Um, and I just thought it was interesting because they, they said, they seemed to think that that was a very good um, outreach and that they got good attendance, but in my mind, I'm thinking three cities, you know, three hundred people. I, I, I don't know that that's exactly um, a good sample um, to base it off of. But those are just my points, um, hoping to get more information soon and uh, looking forward to hear what the subcommittee is able to also get out of those meetings. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Yeah, the, the people also signed into those meetings, so I don't see why it's hard for them to pinpoint, you know, where the, the, the um, last year of the um, attendance um, uh, came from, what city represented in terms of percentage. So, those. But thank you for that report. Let's hear from Councilwoman Cuevas.
Um, I, I attended the League of California City Meeting where uh, speaker um, was Dr. Shirley Weber, the Secretary of State. Um, she spoke about a couple of um, items that are gonna be put to uh, out here, uh, given to the cities to work with. Um, she also talked about the COVID um, situation. Um, and then I also met with LE SD, the Longdale Elementary School District, and we were, we're still in negotiation with the parks. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I attended the Wednesday, March tenth Metro Meeting as well. And I also, along with Bernadette, were surprised at some of the answers that they gave us. And for the very first time, I also uh, heard when I questioned them how often the train would be coming down the track, because there has been so many pieces of information I would like to share with the council, that their answer was approximately every six minutes from four o'clock in the morning till twelve. Because I have heard a wide variety of, of answers on that question, even down to every ninety seconds. And so before I repeated it out to our residents, I wanted to be very clear on that, that it is every six minutes from four o'clock in the morning till midnight. And um, I too have concerns on their advertising. They seem to be under the impression that they have done a really good job, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that everybody had to sign into those meetings. And when they answered Bernadette and my question as to, we wanted to know how many were residents of Longdale, how many were residents of Torrance, and how many were residents of Redondo Beach? They told us that they could not provide us with that information, and I too questioned why. Um, very good meeting. Uh, I felt going into it, they did not have a clue or didn't acknowledge, is probably a better way of saying it, that Longdale had some serious concerns about it. I think we were heard. I think they recognized that um, we don't want this just pushed at us without our residents being involved and having a voice in the decision-making. Um, it feels like that they're wanting to do this and get it finished and incomplete and completed prior to the Olympics, and I just keep saying to myself, I just can't have Longdale's landscape changed the way it's potentially going to be changed for the, and residents having to deal with it for the next, anyway, a hundred years of this. And it's, it's going to change our city. Um, all because we're having a two-week event here. It needs to slow down. It needs to be a serious conversation. And again, we voiced the fact that um, we, we would prefer if they found an ulterior way to get around without disrupting Longdale. And they heard us on that as well. So that's what I did is on Wednesday, March tenth. I attended the Metro Meeting and I look forward to, to serving again and uh, working with Metro for what's right for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Protem, Mayor Protem, Kearney. Hello?
Rhonda, welcome to the Metro world.
Yeah, there you go.
Your dad was fighting, Larry was fighting, Jim, Robert and I were all fighting these people. But that being said, uh, I attended the Lobby Trust Oversight Committee meeting with Kevin and I. We had a few cases settled, a few are pending. I also attended the uh, city's, City Council Subcommittee, Longdale Elementary School District Meeting, Shirley, Kevin, Mike and myself. I want to thank Marla for the information she gave to us, Shirley and I, for the parks, fight with parks. And I hope we have many more and we are working on some solutions, but I don't see anything happening too soon. With that, I turn over to you, Mike, and Robert.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. So um, did have one thing I wanted to mention, but failed to write it down or bring on the note from the office. So I guess next meeting, but I do want to say I did attend the um, the League of, of California Cities uh, meeting with uh, Dr. Shirley Weber, uh, the new Secretary of State, um, former um, Assembly Member of the San Diego um, area. She gave a, a great presentations on um, her role in the legislature as well as her role, her new role as a Secretary of State. Um, what's interesting is um, a lot of people are familiar with um, Secretary of State's role um, for as the um, being the chief elections officer for the state. But what some people may not be really aware of is that the Secretary of State also have um, several other um, that um, that she played as, as well. Um, one of which um, the Department of Corporations is under Secretary of State. And you have all your filings for your um, your, your corporate filings with the Secretary of State, um, as well as your um, your um, statements that you uh, that you have to, have to file with Secretary of State. The archive, State Archives is under Secretary of State um, as well. So it's a very important, um, very important um, office, um, even outside of um, the, the role of being the uh, second officer. Also, they have programs, seeing that the Department of Corporations, um, under Secretary of State, um, they regulate, you know, business oversight and things of that nature. So to have someone uh, from Southern California, um, we're glad to have someone from Southern California um, in that role, we think um, she would be a, a, a very visible um, um, person um, in that role, uh, Secretary of State. And so we welcome Dr. Weber as our new um, Secretary of State and look forward to, to working with her in any way we can. With that, I'll add the, the other thing that I forgot to bring, I'll bring that at the next council meeting. With that, we do have two closed sessions tonight before we adjourn. And I'm gonna ask the new city attorney to give us the vision for which we will go under closed session.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the City Council will meet with uh, legal counsel under Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D four, uh, while you consider whether to initiate litigation in one matter. And then we'll also meet with legal counsel under Section five four nine five six point nine D two, uh, which is a matter that is significant exposure to litigation, the facts and circumstances of which are not known to the potential plaintiff uh, and need not be uh, made public at this time. Uh, when closed session is finished, we'll be back.
Okay, we'll stand for closed session at this time. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report of the session.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, with respect to the first item, item K nine, the council's consideration on whether to initiate litigation. The council gave unanimous direction uh, to initiate that litigation. I will be in touch with special counsel tomorrow uh, morning to get that going. With respect to the item of potential litigation, facts unknown to the potential plaintiff, no reportable action was taken this evening. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Okay, before we uh, adjourn, we want to adjourn tonight in the the memory or the honor of Penny Bolton, a longtime resident here in the city of Longdale. And I think she also um, lived El Camino Village at, at some point as well. Um, she recently uh, passed away. Penny Vernon Johnston Bolton, May twenty ninth, nineteen twenty four through February twenty second, twenty twenty one. So Penny Bolton was a lifelong El Camino Village resident and longtime Longdale resident. She passed away on February the twenty second, twenty twenty one at the age of ninety five. In addition to volunteering at the El Camino College for over a decade, Penny was a longtime member of the Longdale Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. In nineteen ninety eight, Penny was selected as the Chair of the Longdale, excuse us, Penny was selected as for the Longdale's outstanding older American representing Longdale seniors among other Los Angeles County recipients. Known for her dressy, snappy attire and her keen eye for vivid colors, Penny had a sharp mind and was much valued contributor to the city. Penny will be missed a great deal by the Longdale community and the senior citizens that she knew and served. On behalf of the Longdale City Council, we offer our condolences to Penny's family. We adjourn the Longdale City Council Meeting of March the fifteenth, twenty twenty one in memory of Penny Johnston Bolton. In our prayers and condolences to the family, Penny. Just as a side, side note, um, just that was official, Penny was always a delight. Um, she was al- always cheerful, had a very pleasant demeanor. I mean, you, you couldn't have more of a pleasant um, demeanor. Um, of course, she was always um, sharply dressed. I mean, every time you saw her, it's like she just stepped out of the salon, literally. You know, because she had her hair done and everything done, you know, uh, as they say, everything big. You know, and that's, that's how Penny was, and uh, we would definitely would, would miss her and the seniors would miss her um, as, as well. With that, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, April the fifth. It is now eight oh nine and this meeting is adjourned.